Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the forum for the Jerome City Council. A panel of candidates who will be on the August 4 primary ballot. Today's forum is being hosted by the League of Women Voters Greater Verde Valley. And in these new times, we do not have a live audience, but Verde Valley TV is videotaping the forum and the video will be live tonight on Sparklight, Channel 1056, Suddenlink, Channel 2, and the Verde Valley TV YouTube channel, as well as Facebook and other social media outlets. Thanks to Ryan Nichols, who is our, who's in charge of all of the audio or the vision, the audio equipment this evening. So Ryan, thank you. My name is Barbara Luttrell, and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters Greater Verde Valley, and I'll be your moderator for this forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that envisions a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. The purpose of this forum is for the audience out there to get to hear from the candidates on why they want to be a counselor in the city of Jerome. We also have gathered questions from the public to present to you today. And the goal of the forum is fairness, civility, and engagement. I'd like to introduce our League of Women Voters timekeepers, Mary Gassaway and Carol Johnson. Their role is to keep us all on time. They have three signs, a one-minute sign, a 30-second sign, and a stop sign. Mary will raise the one-minute sign and then the 30-second sign to tell you how much time you have left. And then she will raise the stop sign to signal you to end your sentence. Not your paragraph, end your sentence. As we get started, there are a few guidelines for the forum that I'd just like to review. My role is to manage the forum fairly for the candidates and the audience with the goal of keeping the discussion moving forward. We ask four things of the candidates. To be respectful of each other's points of view, speak your mind freely, do not engage in personal attacks, and do not interrupt one another. The time, there are time limits on responses to questions, and they will be strictly observed. And I have the responsibility of enforcing the time limits, but I don't expect that to be an issue. You will see the signs from Mary. There are seven candidates for five seats on the Jerome City Council. And I will give them in alphabetical order, but actually, I think I really ought to give them in the order in which you are seated. It will make it easier for the visual. So starting from position number one, Susan Gregory, Jane Moore, Sage Harvey, Alex Barber, John Baumann, Jack Dillenberg, and Mandy Worth. So we are really delighted to welcome you here this evening. Our format, let me just review that with you. There are three parts to the format. We will have the opening remarks by each candidate, and you will have two minutes each for your introductory comments to tell us why you are running for this position and what you want viewers to know about you. This will be followed by, you will each have two minutes to respond to the question from the League of Women Voters that you were given ahead of time. So that will be the beginning question. Then part two of our forum today will be questions from the community for the candidates. You'll have one minute to respond to the questions. Some of the questions will go to all of you. We'll start with one person, and then the next question will begin with the next one and will go around. So seven of you have a chance to respond, one minute each. And then, we have a lot of questions here in Jerome, so I know we have an active engaged community. And I have more questions than we can probably handle, given that each question could take eight or so minutes for the group to answer. So we will have what we call a lightning round, where we'll get all the questions pretty much asked, but you may get just one question at that point. So we'll go into a lightning round again with just one question. And then the final part of our forum will be closing remarks, and you will have one minute to share your final remarks about why you would like to run for the town, Town of Jerome City Council. Okay? So if we don't have any questions, are there any questions at this point? Yes?
Actually, I'm pretty sure, didn't the email say two to three minutes? The same as-
Some of them said two to three minutes, but as we figured out the timing with seven candidates, we could really end up being here until about eight o'clock. So if possible, we really would like to keep it to one or two.
That's gonna cut mine completely in more than half.
Well, let's see how it goes. Okay? All right? So we'll give it a shot from there because, given the volume, number of candidates. Yes, sir?
You said something about five questions that were pre-given to us?
The League of Women Voter question, which was sent to you.
I didn't get one.
Okay, well, I'll repeat it before we start. Okay? Be thinking, I'll repeat it and you'll have a chance to hear it. Okay, so why don't we begin with our opening statements? And you have two minutes to tell us why you are running for this particular position. So we'll start with Susan Gregory in position number one over there. And Susan, if you would speak close to the microphone, and Brian will be recording us.
Okay. My name is Susan Gregory. Service work is part of my lifestyle. I was a board member for the Sedona Area Homeless Alliance for a few years. I also started a group in Sedona called FLIP, which was Families with Loved Ones in Prison, which was a support group for family members who obviously had loved ones in prison, and that turned into something really big. I was hosting events for prison reform with the sheriffs and police chiefs, clergy, mental health. So Jerome, I ended up here four years ago at the old high school. I'm a photographer, so I have a photo studio there, and I love this town. I live here now, and I like to give back to the community that took me in. I've lived in Arizona for 30 years. I was born and raised in Connecticut. I'm the mother of two kids who are adults. I have a grandchild, and I'm also an artist. So I just love Jerome, and this is why I'm here.
Excellent, thank you. And if you end just saying thank you, then I'll know and we'll move on to the next. Thank you very much. Jane Moore?
A lot of people know me, some people don't. I've been in Jerome for 48 years. I have owned several businesses, worked in a lot of different businesses here in town. I'm a potter, an artist, a horse person, nature and animal lover. I love the history of the town. I love the people in the town. This is home for me. And I, I've done things to volunteer my time here since 1975, helping fire department, serving on boards, also water groups. And I just really think it's important to be engaged in this small community. We have a really unique historic town that we live in, and the possibilities for us to work together in this town are really fabulous compared to living in a big city, I think. And I think it's important, I feel like it's important for me to listen to people, to speak from my heart, to be real, to be inclusive, to always engage people. I like it that people come to council meetings and take active parts in volunteering for the different things in town. And I look forward to continuing to serve my community, just because I really care about the town, and I think a lot of people do, and find commonality with everyone who feels the same way about the town. And thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Sage Harvey?
Well, you, just real quick, I'm gonna say, in the email you said two to three minutes for the opening statement. I timed myself right in between that.
Okay.
My name is Sage Harvey. I was born and raised here in Jerome. I am married to my husband in 24 years. I have two sons, 25 and 28. I am currently the Vice Mayor of the Town of Jerome in my first term as an elected official. I am very proud of this council, and I believe that it has been, made a lot of progress in the last two years. We've had the most ambitious budget that the town manager of over 10 years had ever seen, and we managed to get more of that done, more than half of that done, pre-COVID. We purchased a new patrol car for PD, a water truck for town crew, parking kiosks that have paid for themselves and are already a source of income now in these times. We replaced and added air conditioning units in town hall, which houses the library, the courthouse, the planning and zoning, the community arts center, and the Humane Society. We replaced floors and sinks in the public restrooms and the fire stations. We funded community art programs, repairs to the flumes, replacement of six water line regulator boxes, general sewer infrastructure maintenance, repairs to problematic sewer lines, and repairs to our springs, street patching. And we have funded and proceeded with the engineering of the wastewater treatment plan upgrades, and we have continued to fund the renovation of the Hotel Jerome, which is currently getting the windows replaced, as well as assisted with fire, firewise fuel abatement. This council has addressed some big issues in a short two-year term. We have dealt with residential parking issues, which is not an easy feat. We put in the controversial parking kiosks in hopes of creating revenue for infrastructure that desperately needs repair. We have worked with APS towards a solar program at the 300 level that will supplement our utilities and create covered parking. And with the help of the town crew, we have identified and pinpointed all of the town's infrastructure repair needs and have started working towards funding those repairs. I am very proud of this council and have enjoyed serving with them in a healthy, problem-solving environment for the betterment of Jerome. We all brought our own strengths to this council and worked together with those individual strengths towards the best outcome for our town. I am running for council again with the hope that the townspeople will allow me, again, to be the steward of a hometown that I dearly love. Thank you.
I think you did it.
I cut some out.
Thank you. Okay, Alex Barber?
I'm gonna start out that I was born in Jerome. I raised my daughter in Jerome. I lost my mother in Jerome, and I do plan to live here forever. Jerome is my home, and I am beyond grateful to be here. This is my third term on the dais. I think the only thing Sage left out in that list of accomplishments is 5% of Jerome houses participated in low-income owner occupied housing rehab, which 5% is not a lot, but to help out our low-income people with community development block grant funding is a way to give back to a community. We're also working on much-needed center street, road, and infrastructure improvements as it is our only other way out of the main of town if our main of town has blockage. I can be found in my garden if I'm not volunteering as the mayor of Jerome in a pandemic. I will point out that before I was the mayor in the pandemic, I would have a meeting or two or three a month. In the first couple of weeks of this pandemic, the Vice Mayor and I were at three meetings in the first day, meetings every single day. We still continue to meet with White House, League of Cities, supervisors, mayors, intergovernmental. I also participate in the Verde Front Leadership Council. Again, third term on the dais, I never really saw myself being the mayor. I just saw myself as putting my volunteer efforts into bringing Jerome into where I'd like it to go. And sometimes we are called anti-growthers. I do want to make a statement, I am not against growth. I am about managing growth responsibly, protecting our natural resources, and whatever we can do to maintain our national historic landmark status. Thank you.
Thank you. John Baumann?
Good afternoon. I am John Baumann. I am a fourth, so I go by a middle name of Bob. I am a 40-year resident of Arizona, a 32-year resident of the Verde Valley, and about a 26-year resident of Jerome. Although I grew up in a small farm town, lived there for 26 years, I now consider Jerome my home. I have raised a daughter here. I volunteered for the Jerome Fire Department for over 20 years. I also worked as a volunteer for Cottonwood's Fire Department and served two terms on the Jerome Town Council between 2004 and 2008. I sincerely care about what happens in my town, in this town, and want to continue to see it grow and prosper. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jack Dillenberg?
Hi, thank you. It's really been an honorable privilege for me to serve on the council with this council. And I appreciate Sage's highlighting some of the incredible work this group has done. I'm the only male, and they're tolerant of me, and I appreciate that. But there's a wonderful collaborative environment, though we come from different backgrounds, different beliefs, and so on, and that's all okay because there's a mutual respect for getting the job done. For those of you that don't know me, I'm a recovering public health dentist. I've been doing public service all my life, from running dental clinics for, in community clinics for special needs, the World Games. I ran a clinic in a fishing village on the island of Jamaica for years before getting my Masters of Public Health and getting into policy work. I wanted to steer the boat, and I'd row the boat. I wound up going to Harvard, teaching there for many years, and then coming to Arizona, where I got into government as the state dental director, and ultimately was the state health secretary for the state of Arizona, running the state health department. And I started the first dental school in Arizona at AT Steel University, was the dean for 15 years. I've been coming to Jerome since the 80s, so that's 40 years. My wife and I have been married up here. We were fortunate enough to find a home. We've been living here now for four years. There's no other place in the world I would rather live. And we're so excited to be here, and I'm honored to be able to contribute to improving the health, wellness, and sustainability of this extraordinary community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mandy Worth?
I think that most people probably know me. I currently sit on council, and it's been one of the most interesting, most challenging, and most fun things I've ever done. My husband and I moved to Jerome 18 years ago, having come here from the Detroit area. I have an education background in interdisciplinary humanities, sociology, modern American history and government, and technical writing with a focus in research and documentation. So going into the nitty-gritty of stuff having to do with council is right up my alley. I spent several years, several decades, in performance, teaching, and management wings of the music industry, having been a musician since a young age, including a one-year contract with Yobai College as their head of house for the Performing Arts Center. Primarily, though, my career's in the food and beverage industry. I wait tables in bartenders, and I love it. I've been doing that since the mid-'90s, and I've been with my employer since I moved here in 2002. My family raised me in a spirit of service, and that you give back, and you give back to your community, and you give back to your friends, and you give back to your family. And so I do a lot of volunteer work. I've been volunteering with the high school theater program at Mingus Union for over seven years. I spend time with the Haven-Jerome Food Bank, most recently reorganizing the processes to accommodate the changes in light of the COVID pandemic. I've hosted and coordinated several fundraising events for local citizens and organizations, and I regularly provide information about voter registration and education primarily to young people. Within my position on council, I'm the current representative of Jerome-Tinacog's Regional Council and the Verde Valley Regional Economic Organization's Long Range Strategic Planning Committee, where I represent a subcommittee focused on talent retention and development. As well, I'm involved in the Hotel Jerome Project, assisting residents with education-related situations, and making connections for VA services. Last year, I participated in the Arizona League of Cities and Towns Conference, where I was on the Resolutions Committee and endorsed the League's representation regarding promotion of the Equal Rights Amendment. Additionally, I've had the opportunity to advocate for Jerome and rural communities in general at the state legislature on several topics, including housing and local control. It's been an absolute privilege to serve on this council, and I really hope that the voters will allow me to continue that work.
Thank you. Thank you all for your introductions. I think for the benefit of the viewers, it's worth noting that there are five seats that are on the Jerome City Council. Five of the candidates here are incumbents currently serving on the council and seeking reelection. And Susan Gregory and John Baumann are running for the council at this time, not currently serving on it. And so out of the seven candidates that we have here, the voters will be selecting five candidates. So I think it's worth letting voters know that. Okay, thank you. All right, the next part of our forum is going to be questions. And the first question that we're going to address is the one that was sent to you by the League of Women Voters. The League is dedicated, I'll recount it so that if you haven't seen it or heard it. "The League of Women Voters is dedicated to the preservation and defense of democracy at all levels of government. Racial equity is an integral part of that process. Recently, news about policing in communities of color has filled the airwaves, the internet, and social media. Within this context, how would you describe the relationship between the local police and people of color in the Verde Valley? What are your views about community policing in Jerome? And specifically, what actions will you take to ensure that people are treated equitably? What would be your response to evidence of wrongdoing? How do you think citizens in your community can act locally and positively to address this serious issue of racial equity?" Now, I realize there are six questions in that umbrella question of racial equity and community policing. So those are really the two key ingredients that we're asking you to think about as it relates to Jerome and the Verde Valley. So Jane, can we start with you? And we'll come around, come back to Susan, and then we'll move the questions one down at a time. Okay?
Can I address all of the questions at one time or one question at a time?
Yeah, just address the issue of community policing and racial equity as it relates to Jerome and the Verde Valley. That was just to give you some ideas of how to look at it.
Okay, so you're taking each question one at a time, in other words? Or-
No, that's the whole question.
Okay.
So you have two minutes to address the League issues as far as racial equity and community policing.
I value what my interpretation is of community policing in that the police department is a part of our community and works with the community. And I think as far as looking into how our police department and other police departments treat people of different colors, different, probably, different other things as well. I think people are treated differently depending on their monetary status or their age and things like that. I think there are a lot of issues that it's going to be an ongoing inquiry to see how police departments are behaving, but I'm concerned mainly about ours. And I feel like we have a good police department, and I think that we need to continue having a good relationship with our police department so that they know the people in town and that we feel comfortable with them. And I want to have an ongoing dialogue with them, and I would like people in this town to feel like if there were any problems, that they could address them in an appropriate way and not feel intimidated if they have a complaint against the police department. I know I certainly feel like I can walk in there and talk to them, and if I have an issue, just talk like a normal human being, and I would hope that they would treat everyone that way. I can only speak from my own experience. And if people do have issues, I hope they'll bring it to the council, or if they feel comfortable going to the police chief to talk to him about it, and that if there are problems in our police department, that we can work them out. And I think we need a dialogue.
Thank you. Ms. Harvey?
Excuse me. So I'm gonna kind of just go down in the way that the questions went. Not really sure about the relationship with our officers and the Verde Valley, other than maybe Clarkdale. I know that they deal with Clarkdale on a regular basis. But I feel personally that our officers treat everyone with the same respect and courtesy. Jerome is such a unique town with the community policing. We're already pretty much there. Have a pretty good relationship with the chief of police, and I talked to him about this question. Small-town policing, in essence, is community policing, and we're like already so close to being there that I'm totally okay with our police station. Our officers really enjoy talking to residents and business owners and tourists alike. They know their community, and their priorities are based to the needs of our community. The actions that I would take to ensure that people are treated inequitably, I actually would just continue doing the things that I do, which is having my relationships with the officers in town. I talk to almost all the cops on a regular basis, and I trust and respect our officers. And I will continue to nurture those relationships and be inquisitive when needed. And if there was any sign of wrongdoing, I would expect that an investigation would be done and for the officer to be held accountable if found guilty. And the last question on there was, how do you think your citizens in your community can act locally and positively to address the serious issue of racial inequity? Again, because Jerome is such a unique area, it's not by belief that Jerome has racial inequity issues. I believe that our community should keep doing what it has done for decades, and that is love and care for each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Alex Barber?
I believe Jerome has good officers. Accountability, transparency, and training in all Verde Valley departments seems to be the step forward that we all strive to achieve. I believe working together is key. The Jerome Police Department has been working diligently for the last eight months on becoming an accredited police department. Through the Arizona Chiefs of Police Accreditation Program, they were accepted into this program last year. I believe that the Jerome Police Department does the bets that they can do to de-escalate in these situations. We must ask ourselves how we will remove racial biases and inequities and all work together to achieve this goal. As far as evidence of wrongdoing, implement an investigation immediately, become accountable, become responsible. Get to know your Jerome police officers. Get to know your neighbors. Protect each other. We must remember cops are people just as citizens are. We must try to work together and be kind to one another. Try to put yourself in other's shoes before blaming. Going forward, we must, going forward, we must work together to find solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. John Baumann?
I personally have never had a problem with a Jerome police officer, or Cottonwood, or anyone else. Jerome is a unique town where there are more acceptance, more accept, yeah. They accept people more maybe than some other communities. We are more tolerant of differences within our community. And we all try to help each other. And I think our police respect that. They operate in that same mindset, and as long as we continue to have that accountability of actions, I think that we can continue forward with a safe and progressive community.
Thank you. Jack Dillenberg?
Thank you. I really appreciate the comments of Jane, Sage, the mayor, and John as well. Jerome's a unique town, a unique community that really respects each other, cares about each other. I was really impressed when I moved here on a permanent basis to really meet the police department officers and the chief. And the chief could not be more welcoming and open to, open discussion about any potential issues. We don't have racial issues here. I agree with the Vice Mayor, we don't. And it's, it speaks to the nature and culture of this community and what makes it so very special. Honestly, it's what makes it so very special. And even with the American Indian community, you know, the racial stuff that's going, been going on in the country with BLM and Black Lives Matter and so on. But here in Arizona too, the American Indian population is one that has had serious issues. And even here, we have such a wonderful relationship with our tribes here, and the generosity they show to us, you know, it's extraordinary. So I believe that our police are doing a good job. If there are issues on an individual basis, they have to be met, and I don't think there'll be one bit of pushback from the police chief or anyone else to make a correction if someone slips and goes a little off in some of this. But I haven't seen it. I don't believe it will occur. And I'm just really very proud of the police and the fire and all the public employees and how they respect the citizens of this great community.
Thank you. Mandy Worth?
Thank you. I appreciate the League for bringing this important topic in front of us today. The relationship between local police and people of color in the Verde Valley depends much on the individual officer and more so on the individual department. Lack of cohesiveness between departments in the Verde Valley is certainly an issue. Some are advanced in their understanding of implicit bias- Some are advanced in their understanding of implicit bias and mitigation techniques, and others are just getting started. Some encourage transparency and communication, and others are less well-versed in their importance. Consistent and enforced policies for all departments should be required. Jerome has the ability to stand as an example of community policing, the central goal of which is for the police to build collaborative relationships with the community, and includes increased accountability, clear communication with the public, creating interactive partnerships, and approaching situations from an assistive instead of a reactive position. In Jerome, our officers are generally acceptable to, generally accessible to the public, spending time interacting with community members and visitors, and making the effort to get to know us as individuals. Determining best practices and ongoing training are priorities. Is our department perfect? No, but none is. Continual review and adjustments are always necessary. Specific actions that can be taken to ensure that police treat people equitably are to enforce transparency, accountability, and oversight, sustain and institutionalize best practices and strategies, reject militarization and have clear limits on the use of force, invest in training, proactively engage the community as partners, and organize independent, impartial investigation and prosecution. The ultimate goal is to prevent any wrongdoing by law enforcement, primarily through clear policies of unacceptable behavior and effective training. Citizens in the community can act locally and positively to address the serious issue of racial equity by committing to a vision of a community based on trust. All citizens should come to the table at some level. Speaking out is just the first step, but real change requires more. It requires each of us to make a personal inventory of our biases, own those biases, and retrain ourselves to move past them. It requires us to be educated and informed and share that information with others. It requires clarity of communication and difficult conversations. Citizens should organize and urge their elected officials to proactively build community trust, address racism and inequality, and remove justice.
I think you're done. If you could just end at some point.
It said stop, I stopped.
Perfect. Thank you.
We're a coachable council.
Susan Gregory?
Well, I found these questions interesting because I am not a person of color, and I don't have interactions with the police in the Verde Valley. So there's really, it's difficult to answer the questions. But I do have experience working for a police department. I worked for a police department for eight years in Gilbert, Arizona, back in the early 90s to the beginning of the 2000s. Before community policing was even a term, in a small town like Gilbert, which is much like Jerome, it was just the way officers policed. They were in the neighborhoods. They knew which kids were in trouble. Instead of arresting a kid, they'd find out, well, what's going on in the home and help them, find resources. And that's what I see here. I met Chief Mumma just walking around by the steps on a Saturday with my camera and asked if I could take his picture. He's a very personable police officer, and I was really impressed. And I don't know how many officers we've had here, but I know a few that I've just come up to talk to. I'm impressed with Jerome's police department, period. Racial equity is a term that I had to look up because I'm not really sure what that meant. And how would I respond to evidence of wrongdoing? It really boils down to communication in every aspect with the police, with the town council, and the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we're gonna go into a series of questions that have been submitted to us from the public because the LEAGUE sent out a press release, gave an email address, and people could send in questions. So Sage, we'll start this one with you, and then it's just, you know, a minute per person. All right, so this is the first one. "Our society is facing three interrelated crises: the COVID-19 pandemic, climate change, and racism. How do you see these challenges affecting communities in the Verde Valley and Jerome specifically, and what policies or programs would you support to address them?"
I'm sure I can't fit an answer to all of that in one minute. Wow. Unfortunately, I'm gonna address the current issues that I think are current issues right COVID-19 set us all back. Everybody has been reeling for that, from that. I mean, we were just, I think, barely starting to settle down when everything broke out with the rioting and the killing and the looting and the protesting. And unfortunately, it has not treated this town well. And I think that the things that I want to do, I don't know about necessarily any programs up here, but I would just like to see our town remember to have love and understanding and compassion because that is what this town is about. It is a huge part of what makes us so unique. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alex?
Will you repeat the question, please?
Sure. "Our society is facing three interrelated crises: the COVID-19 pandemic, climate change, and racism. How do you see these challenges affecting communities in the Verde Valley and Jerome specifically, and what policies or programs would you support to address them?"
This whole pandemic has really made everyone not realize that people are entitled to their own opinions. To try to force people into thinking a way that you don't think or fighting with your neighbors and your community over things that you could all just like work together really hard to overcome really hurts my heart. So I'm going to second that, as the vice mayor stated, about the heartbreaking aspect of this whole thing. And I'm just gonna call, talk about accountability, transparency, and training. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Keep in mind, you know, you're speaking to the viewers, so this is what you want people to know about your thinking. So we really appreciate that, and these are questions that came from the public. These are not, this is not a LEAGUE question. Okay, John?
As far as COVID-19, I think we need to present a unified plan, such as wearing masks, such as social distancing, such as only traveling when you need to. Not that we have to make laws to do this, since you can enforce them, there's no use making the law, but you do need to emphasize things that will prevent or slow down the disease. As far as environment, Jerome is in a unique situation where our environment has actually improved over the last hundred years because of no smoke from the smelters anymore. We are getting more vegetation, more trees, more shrubs, more grass, which is, is going to make our fire dangers much more hazardous here in the next few weeks. Until the monsoons come, we are in a extreme fire danger risk, and we all need to be careful about what we're doing and prepared to evacuate if we have to. As far as the Black Lives Matter thing, I think it should be all lives matter. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Jack?
I think relative to COVID-19, it's unfortunate that so many people have politicized this. If you, I'm a public health guy, I've been doing it for over 50 years, and I think the reality is, when you have over 150,000 people die in less than 200 days, you've got a serious illness on your hands. It's not the same bug here that's in New York or in Wisconsin. It's an amazing virus. It's an amazing bug that transforms. It's highly contagious. It doesn't have the high, high death rate unless you're in the at-risk group like me as an old geezer. But I think we have to do a better job of people understanding that this is real and it is not just some political thing that we have to address and do it appropriately, especially a town like us that relies on tourism. We have a million people a year come in here from around the world, and we don't know where they've been or what they're doing, and when they walk around in groups without masks, that's not good. I don't want my citizens getting sick. And I'll stop with that, and also just to mention, you know, the racism thing, I think we do a pretty good job here treating people fairly, equally in Jerome.
Thank you. Mandy?
Sure. Calling them crises is a great term because that's what they are, and the challenges have certainly affected us here in town. Sometimes being a smaller town brings things to a larger lens. I think that the way we need to address things is through honest communication, transparency, and public input. Open forums between government, departments, and the public is a great way to see where is everybody, how can we get everybody on the same page, and how can we have a functioning discussion? We need to gain information from science, fact, and reliable sources. And really what it comes down to is working together as a community. We're all here for the same goal, which is to make Jerome a wonderful place and a great place to live, visit, and work. And if we are not willing to work together to come to a point of agreement, then what are we doing? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Susan?
Could you repeat the question again?
Sure. "Our society is facing three interrelated crises: the COVID-19 pandemic, climate change, and racism. How do you see these challenges affecting communities in the Verde Valley and specifically Jerome, and what policies or programs would you support to address this?"
Policies, education is the thing that we have to have with everything. The pandemic with the COVID, just as a business owner here, I take it very seriously. I'm a photographer, and I have art classes. The people are six feet apart. They do wear masks. There's hand sanitizer everywhere. I think it's important that we understand how serious it is because I was naive to it at first. But education, open forums, and communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane?
I think the COVID issue has shown us how vulnerable our town is. We've seen small businesses closing and actually going out of business. I think the disparity between income levels has been apparent during this. People out of work, people possibly losing their homes because they can't make payments. I think that it's apparent that we should work together to make our town more sustainable and possibly less dependent on tourism. One of the things the town's talked about doing is community gardening. I would like to encourage people to grow their own food if they're able to, to have shops here that benefit the residents as well as the tourists so that we don't have to drive 50 miles or 30 miles to, or buy things online. I think that it shows us that our community needs to work together to be more sustainable, and I think we do have a community that can do that and get along and not be divisive and make these issues political, but something that we can all work together on and get along on and...
Thank you.
Just communicate.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll do, we'll start the next question. I hope you don't mind if I, do you mind if I call you by first names?
It's fine.
Okay, thank you. So we'll start the next question with Alex. A quotation on the title page of Jerome's 2018 general plan reads as follows, "Respect for the past, looking toward the future." The question is, do you see a sustainable future for Jerome? And if so, what specific actions will you promote to ensure a sustainable future for Jerome?
I think Councilmember Jane touched on that just a little bit. We need to get a little bit away from the tourism base that we're so highly dependent upon, grow more food. We would all have to put our heads together to figure out how we could become a little bit more self-sufficient. I know people have tried and tried in the past. Jerome is a balancing act to make everything work correctly. So that is something we would have to work hard on. Respecting the past, we are a national historic landmark. We are the number one Old West history left in the state. With SB 1350 not letting us regulate vacation rentals, it becomes very hard to even have people in the town to be residents, to make decisions. If we become a big place to stay, we will have nobody here to run the volunteer positions. So I would like to put my head together if I'm re-elected with the new council and work on how we can become more self-reliant, more sustainable. I will point out Jerome has no banks. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, John?
I agree with what was just said. Jerome is a balancing act, and it seems that we're tipping more towards the summer home retirement type community, which is forcing out our younger folks, the people that we count on for fire, fire especially. We have talked many years ago about affordable housing, but I really haven't seen anything really come of it. I think we need to pursue that. We also need to pursue the different sources of income, which to me means manufacturing since that's my background. But then again, we have, we don't want to destroy the town or to change the town in such a way that it doesn't, or it becomes something other than what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack?
Can you just repeat that?
Sure. Do you see a sustainable future for Jerome? Jerome, and if so, what specific actions will you promote to ensure a sustainable future?
I do, I do see a sustainable future in our future. I think part of it is, one of the things I like to work on is developing a self-help clinic up at the town hall where people can go in, check their A1C, check their blood pressure, be responsible and accountable for their health. Oral health is a big deal for me. I've been fortunate to help get a dental van up here to help people. I think that's important, that people have access to healthcare. I think also enriching the transportation experience with the rest of Yavapai County so that we can have shuttle activity to get people up here down into other communities in the Verde Valley that they could access, whether it be markets, doctors, work opportunities, that we have the opportunity as well for, I think, visitors giving. I think one of the things that I marvel at, and we've talked about at council, is developing a Friends of Jerome opportunity for our million visitors that visit Jerome from outside of Arizona. They go back to their states. I want to see if we can create something where they, if we get 1% of a million visitors give a dollar, we've done pretty darn good. So I think we need to have those opportunities as well. I think the affordable housing has been mentioned. Our population, we don't have a lot of under five-year-olds, but we have a lot of over 70-year-olds. And I think we have to be responsible for how are we helping our older population be sustainable and healthy.
Thank you. Mandy?
It's about balance. Like everybody said, we have to figure out how to balance where we've come from and where we're going. One example of where we're struggling, and the mayor touched on this, is the availability of housing. It's at a crisis level, especially for those of us that don't have the ability to purchase a home of our own. We're losing employees, we're losing fire department volunteers, we're losing families, children, and the next generation of council members. Who's gonna run the town if we don't have somebody here, if we don't have someone who's vested interest in it? But Jerome's resilient. We've managed to survive when most thought that we were doomed, and I think that we'll continue to do so, as long as we pay attention to our community, our residents, and our towns' needs.
Thank you. Susan?
Jerome is a magical place. That's how I see it. Attracting more younger people to live here, become homeowners, or at least have affordable housing, especially for the artists that work here, that can't afford to live here. I love the idea of a community garden. When I lived in Sedona, I was part of one, and we actually had our own gardens and traded food with each other. That's how I see Jerome being. Again, it is a balancing act. The infrastructure of just the houses themselves is difficult. I rent a home here. I don't, I would love to buy a house here. That's not possible for me right now. But just keeping the historic value also of the town while it's being sustained is important. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane?
I guess I kind of addressed that with the last question, but I, affordable housing and the issue of second homes and vacation rentals makes it really hard to have affordable housing here, and I really think we need to address that because, as Bob said, we, we need younger people, and other people have said, we need younger people with a vested interest living here. And I know when I first moved here, this was a lot more of a diverse community because it was affordable. And as it isn't affordable anymore because people can rent their homes out for a lot more than monthly rent would be, that we need to address that so that we do have young people moving here. And I think also artists are creative, and we have a lot of creative, hard-working people here other than just the artists. And I think together we can figure this out, I hope, so that we can staff our fire department, and we do have people... And we do have people serving on boards. I just think that we can figure out a solution, I hope.
Okay. And Sage?
Yeah, I think I'm just going to reiterate what everybody else has said because those, I mean, that is what it comes down to for this town. It is such a balance. We are so unique. We don't have, and I think I'm going to follow up where she was leaving off, we don't have any banks, we don't have any grocery stores, we don't have any gas stations. We have to be self-sufficient. I think that we've, the affordable housing thing is, needs to, needs to change in this Because that is what's going to happen. Everything's going to turn into vacation rentals and summer homes, and we're not going to have anybody here who's going to volunteer. That is probably our biggest problem right now for actually keeping this town the unique town that it is. I think that we've already started, like Jane said, with the garden, the community garden. If that ends up working out, there are other places in town that we can extend that to. And I think that, again, people grow their own food, you know, it's, I think that Jerome will survive, it has, for a very long time. And we're all, we work together up here. We're like a family, and I think that that's going to keep us sustainable.
Thank you. All right, John, we'll start the next question with you. And a number of you touched on this as you talked about the balance between residents and tourists. And so the next question was, that was submitted, says Jerome is unique in that there are about 3,700 visitors for every one Jerome resident. I don't know if these numbers are accurate, but this is what was submitted. With an estimated one and a half million people coming to Jerome every year, what would you like to see or capitalize on for tourism?
I think that tourists come to Jerome because of its unique character. Its buildings that are two feet apart instead of 10 feet apart. The construction, the general feel of the, of the place, and the people themselves. And to capitalize on tourists, I think we already have one of the highest tax rates in the state. We have paid parking. I think that maybe it's time to give the tourists their money's worth. And I would like to see more Jerome-made things in the stores instead of things from Taiwan. I would like to see more artists and their, maybe a homeowner who can sell their stuff in the front room or something that would produce a more Jerome feeling rather than commercial sales.
Thank you. Jack?
Good, John, that's, that's good stuff. I think, you know, when it comes to the tourism, as I mentioned, I think Jerome is unique. I'm glad we got the parking kiosks, and that was a real accomplishment for this council. Thank you, thank you, thank you, council members, mayor. It's, that's generated a lot of revenue, I believe, and tourists are not complaining about it. They're not. Pay a couple of bucks, and they're here in Jerome. I think we need to do some things, whether it be more local art, or whether or not we're able to, again, develop this Friends of Jerome. I believe that there are hundreds of thousands of people throughout this country that have been here, that love what, how special Jerome is, and would be willing to donate a little bit of money to help us with our sustainability. And that sustainability, I believe, whether it be affordable housing, whether it be the pipes, the sidewalks, whatever it may be, to help this town take care of its citizens, and then even provide a safer, more accessible community for the tourists that are here, I think that would be wonderful. I think we have great opportunity. Let's take advantage of it. Give them their money's worth, make it safe, and let's be creative in asking them to be part of the solution.
Thank you. Mandy?
Well, we all know that Jerome's unlike anywhere else in the world for so many reasons, but it's that uniqueness that is such an important part of creating the fabric of Jerome that the visitors appreciate when they come here. Without that, we lose them. And so to maintain it, maintaining our diversity of residents, our annual events, our commerce, our education is so important, but also enhancing that in a way that is still Jerome, that is still unlike anywhere else in the world. That's why we all live here. That's why we love this town so much. And to try to share that with the visitors is such an important thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan?
I'm all about the arts. And because I have a studio at the old Jerome High School, there are some spaces in there that could be used for theater, music. I mean, it's great that we have the spirit room for bands, but there's other spaces that we could have for bands, so people would want to see. And it's a very unique building. So a theater group with plays, dance, music, that's what I see. It would be unique. It would be Jerome residents doing it in a Jerome old building. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane?
When I moved here, there was a guy on Verde Street who did shoe repair. We all took our boots and shoes there to be resold or re-healed. There was a grocery store. There was a guy who repaired television sets when they still had tubes. I would like to see, as Bob said, people that actually do something that the local people and the tourists might benefit from, locally made goods. I know I make pottery to sell and have done that since 1980, and so I am an advocate of locally made goods as well. And would like to see more of that and functional things, maybe clothing, maybe shoes, things like that, that everybody could benefit from, including the locals. And I think that could be an exciting possibility, too. We have a lot of creative people here. And I think the parking kiosk has been good because I talk to the visitors that come in the shop and, oh.
Continue.
We are coachable.
Yeah, I ended mid-sentence.
They don't mind paying the kiosk.
You're doing good.
Sage?
That's great.
Well, I'm going to agree with pretty much everything I heard here also. I think that we've already started capitalizing a little bit with the parking kiosks, great source of income right now. I also agree with more local products, more local workmanship, where we can go back and forth and maybe even barter, go back to some bartering in the local area, and maybe not even tourism, but like for locals. That was one of the things that really drew people to Jerome when I was a kid, was that it was all local stuff. It was people that lived here made the stuff that were being, that was being sold in the stores, and I think that we need to go back to that core a little bit more. And I'm going to kind of agree with Susan on the more musical events. We have three beautiful open space parks that have power in them. I think that we need to bring more live music more, where people, not even just people that are over 21 can go in the bar, but they can come to the parks and enjoy the music. And maybe when COVID is mellowed out and we can get more than six feet close, we can have a huge music festival or something. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex?
I agree. When I was a kid in this town, all the businesses, maybe not all, but most were locally owned and operated, making things in their stores. It is, it kind of hurts your heart when you see a lot of the stores not locally owned and operated anymore. According to our general plan, we really like to, we're an artist town. We like to showcase that. We don't want to have the same thing that everyone sees in every little, you know, trading post from here to the four corners, so unique. Donations, our kiosks, our very low-priced kiosks, addition of more kiosks, maybe if the, you know, the council and the town is interested. Donations, maybe a little better signage on our kiosks of, if you love our town, then donate. You don't just have to pay the $3 or $5, you can donate more. I do really love the idea of the Friends of Jerome because donations, to get everyone to just, that loves us so much, to give us a dollar, if we could capitalize on the dollar of the million and a half people, think about the financial implications of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to start with Jack on this one, and I'm assuming the information here is correct, but let me know if it isn't. This was submitted. Water is a precious resource in Arizona. And in Jerome, residential water is billed according to the number of people at a location, not in terms of usage? Yes? Is that correct?
That is a correct statement.
Okay. And so the question is, do you think this is a fair, equitable, and honest way to conduct this business, or what should be done differently? Jack?
You're asking me? My opinion is I believe water billing should be based on usage.
Okay.
Not number of people living in a place, the amount of water. And I think this is something we're discussing. I think we've got a couple of really good water experts that have been providing their input. The good news is we have incredible water. We're springwood, it's one of the very few towns in the United States that our water supply is spring-based, not well-based. That is huge. So the quality of the water is there. I think we have tremendous accessibility with the water saving in the, in the mountains. So I think we're in good shape. We just need to have a better equitable way of doing the billing. That requires new hardware, new, different gadgets that need to be installed. But I'm a firm believer in usage, build what you use.
All right, Mandy?
This is a conversation that this particular council has taken up and are researching to the point where we have hired a company that specializes in this to bring options to the table so that we can make sure that it is a fair and equitable process.
Do you have a particular stand at this point?
I do, but because I currently sit on council and this is an ongoing legislation conversation, I'm loath to have that opinion outside of an open meeting.
Okay. Susan?
I moved into my house a year ago here in Jerome, and I didn't know how the billing worked. So I was surprised when I got my first bill because it's not usage, and I thought it would be. So I'm absolutely for usage because I would, it would be a lot less, and I'm a water conservative person anyway. I could run my water all day long and pay the same price. It just doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane?
I'm happy to say this council has been looking into this and is going to try to change the way that it's billed. It's a lot more complicated, I think, than people realize, mostly because of the sewer usage as well as tied to the water usage. And I, I really believe that most people here are very water-conscious because we do have fluctuating flows from our springs, and at times we have plenty of water and other times we have very, very little water. And even then, billing is not going to necessarily make somebody be conservative with their water use. And I think it's important to understand how the system functions, and I believe that the council will at some point decide on how to deal with this issue and make it fair and equitable for everyone.
Thank you. Sage?
I'm going to take the same stance as Mandy Worth has. That is something that we're currently working on, and it breaks open meeting laws for me to state my opinion in front of the other council members. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Alex?
We were urged by the water consultants, the water professionals, to not change anything during the summer and to work on it a little bit more in the fall. So that is my stance on it. It is an ongoing process with the council. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And John?
I would agree that payment by usage is a more fair system. Since I'm not on the council, I guess maybe I can say that
Yes, you can.
That the, the reason that it was paid the way it is is because of a legal issue with the mining company. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate all your comments on that. All right, Mandy, we'll start with you on this one. We've seen a growing trend at the state level to disempower local governments and tie their hands regarding things like short-term rentals, cell towers, and more. What do you think is the best way to handle this going forward?
Well, of course, I'll get this question. Local control is something that I've been verbally, vocally advocating for, both before being on council and currently being on council. And I do tend to go to the state legislature and speak on a regular basis regarding it. It is a new thing to us in Arizona to have everything coming down from the state direction and not allowing for any flexibility at the local level, especially in our rural communities. Because what's good for us is not good for Cottonwood, is not necessarily what's good for Phoenix, is not necessarily what's good for Yuma. And where the bottom line comes to is we need a different governor. And I don't have any problem saying that out loud, but he's the one who has enforced the state policies overseeing and taking away the ability of the municipalities and the counties to make decisions for what is right for their area.
Thank you. Okay, Susan, your point of view?
Well, we're not Phoenix. So I think that our local government should absolutely decide what we do here. You can have a million Airbnbs down in Phoenix. Five Airbnbs up here could be catastrophic. Cell phone towers. Do we want cell phone towers in Jerome? Probably not. I can't think of any other things that would come up.
Short-term rentals. Oh, you mentioned those.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I, local governments need to be in control of what's the best, in the best interest of the community and the citizens, period.
Okay. Jane?
One size does not fit all, and yes, I've been appalled that we've had the top-down telling local communities what they can and can't do in regards to their health, safety, and welfare. And I really am an advocate for local control as well, and I think this needs to stop.
Okay. So policy is called preemption, preemption by the state of local government's authority. Sage?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. Okay. We've seen a growing trend at the state level to disempower local governments and tie our hands regarding things like short-term rentals, cell towers, and more. What is your opinion of the best way to handle this going forward?
Vote and make sure that your local government gets to do what is good for your area. And voting at the top makes that difference. I'm not going to quite say it like someone else did, but I also believe that maybe a different governor would help. My favorite saying these days is that Jerome is so unique, we do not fit under a blanket. We don't fit under anybody's blanket. We are our own little peaks sticking out, and we need to be able to run this town because we're the ones that are here, we're the ones that talk to the community, that know what the community wants because we live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex?
Since I've sat on the dais for the last three terms, I have watched them tie our hands over and over and over again. I think Councilmember Worth talked about, we were this little bubble up in the sky. So vacation rentals, if we have no people that live here, our boards and our council are completely volunteer. Our police and our fire have paid positions, our volunteer, fire has a couple paid positions, is all volunteer. Our chief does a wonderful job at managing the budget of having a couple full-time officers, and he usually picks some retired people that love Jerome that will come up here and not have any benefits. And Jerome cannot pay what a lot of the other municipalities can pay. So again, I'm not going to call us a blanket, I'm going to talk about it as an umbrella. To take an umbrella and put it over the state and tell us we have to do that, it needs to be done on a case-by-case basis. I have a huge problem with the FCC, having spent no money on independent fact-checking on the, the biological effects of cell towers. And vote. Thank you.
So in response to the part of the questions that says, how do you feel about handling this? It really does come down to voting?
Well, disempowerment of local municipalities does nothing but cause headaches in the state of Arizona. That is definitely my statement.
Okay, thank you. John?
State government should only be doing the things that the cities and counties can't do for themselves. I think Jerome is more than capable of making its own ordinances to control vacation rentals or any other situation that comes up. So yes, vote, whatever, do what you can, but we still have to live within this current situation. And while we we may not be able to stop BnBs or Airbnbs, we can regulate them. And I think that's the process we have to go through at this point.
Okay. Jack?
I agree with my colleagues that this needs to be local. Let me go back to the League of Women Voters for the Greater Verity Valley. Making democracy work is having local government take care of local needs. That's how democracy works, not with some people in some state position that are getting donations and funding and from corporations and so on, for whatever reason. You know, Sedona, a very big town, is having trouble with its Airbnbs. We're a small town, having similar troubles. We need to have local government have the opportunity to make democracy work.
Okay, thank you. Now, there are five of you that are incumbents, and there are two of you that are new, running for the council. And so the question is, for those of you that have served in the past, past couple of years, what would you consider the outstanding achievement, one achievement, during your time on council? And for those of you that have not served and are new, what is it that you would like to see become your accomplishment, working as a team, of course, for your constituents? Okay. So Susan, why don't we start with you as someone new running for council?
Okay. I'm passionate about the arts. So the artists that work and live here, that's really what my stance is. Affordable housing, obviously. And to keep the Jerome arts authentic and not let it get commercialized. Having more live music, having theater, having things that will keep us bonded as a community. The residents will all have a chance to participate and will entertain the tourists that come to. So for me, it's making sure that the arts don't die here.
Thank you. All right, Jane?
As a councilperson, that's a really hard one to say. I think one of the really nice accomplishments, I think, is how well this council has worked together. And while we may not agree, we're willing to listen and talk things out and come to an agreement on it and put it to work. And I think the parking kiosks is one of the big ones. And it was started with previous councils, but this council actually put it into action. And I, for one, was very reluctant and actually changed my mind after we talked about it a lot. And I think it's been a wonderful thing. It's a good way for our visitors to help us protect and preserve the town that we love. And it provides much-needed money for our infrastructure, our water and sewer and streets and things like that. And those monies will be dedicated to upgrading infrastructure. And I think that's been a great thing that this council's done.
Thank you. All right, Sage?
I'm going to have to pretty much mimic you. Is that the word I'm looking for? No. I think it's not. But I think that the outstanding achievement that we've done is this council working together. I read off a list at the beginning of a lot of things that we did in a half of a year, you know? That was a little bit more than half of the things that we had put in our budget for this fiscal year. But I think that the biggest achievement is just the way that we've all been able to come together and work together. And then I also want to reiterate the parking kiosks, just the money for the infrastructure is there. Finally, it's coming in. Thank you.
Okay. Alex?
I also am proud of this council. We've done a lot of hard work. The use of grant funding that this town utilizes is amazing. Dig into it if you want to see how many things we've done with grant funding. Our water, we put quite a bit of money into water, made a position for someone to actually do maintenance, fix up a bunch on that. That is a very proud achievement, to keep water flowing into this town, have someone actually checking on things. Our infrastructure, I also think that the kiosks were something that were talked about and talked about. It was a hard sell to a lot of people. It's worked out for the benefit of our town. Before the COVID-19, everything seemed to be running smoothly. After the COVID-19, it seems like we're still making a little bit of money. So there's that part of it. Jerome is just such a wonderful community. We try hard to work together. When the other thing I'm very proud of, an achievement of mine, is being on the council and being the mayor, having the roots of the town come out and voice their opinion. Where in prior councils, they didn't even think if they raised their hand, someone would let them talk. Thank you very much.
John?
As a former council member, I think the best thing we did was to upgrade the 300-level parking lot and the water line to the new water tanks. As a new person running for the council, I think what I'm most interested in is accountability and transparency in our departments.
Okay, thank you. Jack?
You know, I think Sage and Jane and my colleagues have really identified the things we've accomplished as a council, the key on and on. It's just wonderful. And I feel so proud to be able to work with this group. Personally, individually, well, you know, I can't get away from my oral health background. I feel real good personally that I was able to get a dental van from a not-for-profit to come up here and treat 28 patients and provide almost $27,000 of free dentistry, which is huge, to people that really needed it and didn't have access to it. And then we had a second van come up to do the same thing for free. Not a dollar was paid. And I'm hoping to be able to do it again, once all this settles down. And I think if I can help to improve the health and have individuals improve their own health in Jerome, that's my personal, personal thing. Though as a team, I'm so delighted with the opportunities and the grant monies that the mayor has talked about, the ideas, the innovations, and the ability to make a difference that this council has made.
Thank you. Mandy?
Similar to what some of the current council members have said, it's impressive the respect level that we have from the get-go, from day one, for each other's differences, and then also a willingness to learn from those differences. I also have been really proud of this council for encouraging public participation and thinking outside the box in terms of what constitutes public participation. You know, you don't have to go to a meeting, but listen to it, talk to a council member, ask for a one-on-one, send an email. And we've been really good about encouraging that. As a general thing, prioritizing the drastic needs of our infrastructure from a budget standpoint, but also maintaining the services that town needs, and still being able to be a little creative and find new ways to do things in town and new things to put out there in front of our residents and see what works. Grant funding is such a huge part of how we turn the wheel here. And the Hotel Jerome project is a great example. It's been almost, it's, what is it, about 95% has been grant-funded to this point?
Yeah.
And then also outreach. We are living outside the bubble I always talk about. So this council has been pretty good about going outside the bubble and representing town.
Thank you. Okay, apparently zoning is a question that is out there in the public. And I don't particularly know any issues related to Jerome zoning ordinance, but two questions came up related to that. So you may be able to capture the essence of it a little bit more. So Jane, we'll start with you. Here are the two questions. What are your views on upholding the Jerome zoning ordinance and general plan as a safety measure to protect Jerome's historic status? The other one says, if you could change one thing in the zoning ordinance, what would it be and why? So the question is, what's going on out there in terms of the Jerome zoning ordinance? And where do you stand on it? One minute. Yeah, these are all one minute.
Well, having worked on the general plan with the group for four years and just having completed it and adopted by the last council, I think the general plan is a good guideline to follow. I think it was well thought out. The zoning ordinance serves a purpose for fire safety, for historic preservation. I think there are a lot of reasons that we have the zoning ordinance. And it always ends up being tweaked along the way to suit changing needs. And I really think it's a good guideline for the town to follow to protect its historic character. And just recently, we did do, rezoned a district to allow for duplexes rather than single-family homes. And I think with community input and the council, that changes can be made that benefit the community members.
Thank you. Sage?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. It really comes down to the Jerome zoning ordinance. Okay. If you could change one thing in the zoning ordinance, what would it be and why? And what are your views about upholding the Jerome zoning ordinance and general plan as a safety measure to protect the historic status? So I'm going to assume the Jerome zoning ordinance has to do with the historic nature of the community. And that must affect people's ability to do certain things. But you know this and I don't. So the question came from the public about, you know, where do you stand in terms of the Jerome zoning ordinance? Would you change anything?
Well, I think that we should definitely uphold our zoning ordinances to keep our town historic. That's the whole point of them. And I don't know that there's just one thing in the zoning ordinance that needs fixed. Thank you.
Okay. Alex?
I say thank you to everyone that worked on the general plan. The general plan has lots of great things in place. The zoning ordinance gets slight adjustments as necessary as we grow towards the future. Jerome has a huge problem with parking. Jerome was built before automobiles. So when someone buys a house and they want to put one car there, that's a problem. If they want to put four cars there, that's a huge problem. So to stand by our zoning ordinance, to keep our town the national historic landmark that brings everyone here, those are very, very important things. So the zoning ordinance can get very deep, is how I'm going to put it. Our ordinances and our codes, they are there for a reason. If they need slight adjustments, we do that very, very carefully. Thank you.
Thanks. John?
I agree with most of what's been said. The one thing that I have noticed is, in our zoning ordinance, we have setbacks of five feet on familiar property line for side ordinances. If we're talking about affordable housing and keeping the town historically correct, those variances or those distances were not met during that time. Now, the reason for them is fire protection, which I'm all for. But I believe you can accomplish the same thing with fire-resistant materials and residential sprinklers. And in my opinion, that would, one, keep the town looking more historic, and, two, deal with the fire issue.
Thank you. Jack?
I think, you know, when it comes to zoning issues, we've addressed them when it comes to from single housing to duplex housing. I think it's a case-by-case scenario. We want to protect the town, I think, to John's point, and we want to, at the same time, be able to accommodate the people that live here in the safest and best way while maintaining the integrity, the history of it with our general plan, which I think has been a great accomplishment to get that done. You know, I'd love to see us take advantage of some of the land out there and the 300 level, the 500 level that we don't have access to, you know, with the former owners, the mines and so on, see what opportunities and flexibility that we may have to do some things we hadn't thought about. But I clearly think that the zoning ordinances, you know, they have to be looked at individually if we're looking at change and done in a very deliberate way that is for the well-being to preserve the historic nature of Jerome.
Okay, Mandy?
The general plan is a guideline document for where we're at and where we want to go. And we update that on a regular basis. And it is not an easy task to do. It's very well-thought-out. It's very conscientious. And it receives a lot of public input to put together. So it's something that we need to look at regularly. The zoning ordinance is in place for multiple reasons, not the least of which is to ensure safety and conscientious management. But it also keeps everyone subject to the same rules and should be enforced that way. As far as changes to the zoning ordinance, not the easiest thing in the world to do, because it is a legal document. But there are certainly places where our zoning ordinance could have some adjustments made for clarity and continuity. Thank you.
Okay. Susan?
I believe that it's important to maintain the zoning ordinances to preserve the historical value of Jerome. Thank you. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. The next question, and I guess we start it with Jane, so we'll start with Sage. How will the council address funding for infrastructure and affordable housing? All of you have addressed the idea of affordable housing and infrastructure. How will the town, how will the town address funding for these issues?
Well, the funding, we've already addressed funding for infrastructure to some degree. I mean, we're hoping that the parking kiosks are going to bring us in enough money to do that. And the money that they're bringing in now makes me think that it won't take very long. I mean, we're doing good on the weekends. We make good money. Even now, with COVID, we've had some of our biggest days in getting revenue from those. We can get more grants, which is always an option up here. And I missed the second half of that question for some reason.
No, that was fine. Okay, Alex?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Infrastructure, okay. How will the town council address funding for infrastructure and affordable housing?
As far as the infrastructure goes, the kiosks. I'll second what the vice mayor said. And as far as affordable housing, we're working on it. Continue to apply for every grant that we can possibly get. Thank you.
When you talk about infrastructure and the kiosks, for the benefit of the viewers, is there like an annual income from just the kiosks that you can share?
There is an annual income. There was a projected annual income. Off the top of my head, I am thinking that we are getting probably, what would you say?
We budgeted $125,000.
For the whole year?
Mm-hmm.
$125,000 for the whole year?
$125,000?
It was directly to go to infrastructure and public safety. So that when we put up the kiosks, we were streamlining where the money was going to go. Made it a little bit easier pill to swallow for all the naysayers.
Thank you so much. John?
Thank you. I believe the mayor's comments are correct, that the infrastructure should be financed by the kiosk money. My personal belief is that most of it or all of it should go to infrastructure. As far as affordable housing, I think that we're going to have to change some of our ordinances. And as Jack mentioned, the mining companies has the best place to expand the town, out to 300-level road out towards the Gold King Mine. That is the most logical and affordable place to build housing. And we have a large parking lot out there already. To me, that's the best place. But you're going to have to work with the company, not against them, to accomplish that.
Jack?
And the question, I apologize. The question again, please?
The question was, how will the town council address funding for the infrastructure and for affordable housing?
Couple of ways. One, I think we know about the kiosk, and that's great, and that's moving in that direction. The other thing, too, is with partners, whether it be the mining company for up in the 300, 500 level. But don't forget, the town also owns land down in Clarkdale, by the cemetery there that we own. And there's at least 15, 20 acres, maybe more. It's 40 total. Yeah, 40 total. And I think we have an opportunity there. There's a developer that has reached out to us, too, to talk about maybe doing some affordable housing here on land we already own. There's water to that property. There's electric to that property. We'd have to deal with the neighborhood people who live there to see how they feel about it. But gee whiz, that's right down where APS is going to be building that new firehouse, their new power station. So I think we have some opportunities, if we're willing to be innovative, if we're still going to be responsible, transparent, all these qualities. still going to be responsible, transparent, all these qualities, to do some things for infrastructure improvement and growth for affordable housing. Affordable housing is a critical element. What the idea I'm talking about down there is with mini homes. I think tiny homes, opportunities are very real for what we want to do to expand, whether it be up at the mine or whether down in the, down the hill a little bit.
Mandy?
Sure. We need to continue to prioritize the drastic infrastructure needs for sure and utilize guaranteed financial assistance, competitive grant funding, and kiosk revenue. It's a necessity. Without water, sewer, streets, sidewalks, we don't have a town. As far as affordable housing, Jerome is actually really uniquely positioned compared to other municipalities in the fact that we, as a town, own property. And we own buildings that can become affordable housing locations as long as we're willing to think outside the box and be creative on housing types and the areas in which to make those. With our historic status and the drastic need for housing and the fact that we already have that ownership, there are grants to assist with the rehabilitation or the building of facilities to accommodate that type of housing, as well as through public-private partnerships, through government-to-government partnerships. It's so important that we pay attention to where can we bring in every bit to help us.
Thank you. Susan?
Well, since I'm the one that keeps bringing up affordable housing, the infrastructure, roads, parking lots, the sewer and water, we could get really creative with funding for those things that we need. The kiosks are great, the grants are great. I really don't have any idea, concrete idea right now, but there's some things that I'm considering that I can bring up later.
Great. Jane?
As Mandy said, the town has a great opportunity in that we do own land and buildings that we could look at. And we have been discussing these, and I hope that we can continue discussing these and actually put some of them into action. I do know that if we increase our population very much in this town, we will need a major sewer treatment plant upgrade. And so we do need to look at that, and we'll need to look at grants if we do increase the population in the town very much. So, but like was said, we are at an advantage because we do own property that we could put this in place.
Okay, and I think we started with you, Sage, right? Okay. You know, as I look at most of the questions, we've kind of answered them, even though, because I was going to do a lightning round, but a lot of them are repeats. So I think you've covered all of the topics. One of them is, if the town of Jerome got a million-dollar grant in like 20 seconds, where would you look to use that grant? Mandy, let's start with you.
Sure. Affordable housing and infrastructure.
Thank you. Jack?
Affordable housing, infrastructure, and local, some of the things I heard here about developing local art, local businesses somehow.
It's only a million dollars.
It's only a million. But, I mean, somebody who can only make $10,000 can get a local artist to really make a difference in their lives, or $20,000, $30,000. So I would think develop that local Jerome artistry talent that I've been hearing about. And maybe even putting some of it into the school, so we can get a theater down there. I like that idea as well.
Okay. John?
That's a rough one. Infrastructure needs so much work, but we also need to consider the theater, the arts, the local artist, some type of platform for them to develop their skills.
Alex, you have a million-dollar grant. Where do you want to use it?
Local art, infrastructure, affordable housing, fairly inequitably between the whole town, which would be very hard with a million dollars. Thank you.
Infrastructure.
Okay. Jane?
I'd have to say infrastructure, too, and maybe combine that with some affordable housing.
Definitely the auditorium at the high school, the theater room, and improving the roads. I live here now, and I go up County Road, and that road is rough.
Okay. Now, one of the questions that was submitted is for the new folks who are running for office. Have you attended meetings of the board or town council? Susan?
I attended one meeting when I first came here.
Okay. John?
I was on for four years of town council. So yes, I've been to many meetings. I have not been to recent meetings.
And so the question is, in your view, what is the current council not doing that is motivating you to run for office? John?
I believe that my greatest concern is finances and accountability of our departments.
Okay. Susan?
I don't believe that the town council is not doing anything that they're not supposed to do. I just want to add my skills and talents to the town council. When I worked for the police department, I was part of the mayor and town council. I had to present statistics to them. My boss was the chief of police and commander of command staff. So I have that background. I know how it works. I also ran businesses, so I have a financial background also. And I'm an artist. So I have a lot of different talents that I could bring just to add to what they're doing now.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're now ready for your closing statements. And so you will each have two minutes, and we'll go in the reverse order. I know, did you want more?
No, I was happy that you gave us a full two minutes. I guess I can read my whole thing.
I think I said one minute earlier. I think I just blew it. We have time, right? Okay, so that should take us 14, 15 minutes with that little breathing in between. Okay, so we'll start with Mandy. And so these are your closing comments to the viewers whom you are asking to vote for you for council.
It's always so interesting to think about elections in Jerome because we're not any sort of a traditional campaigning kind of place. You know, these are our neighbors and our coworkers and our family and our friends who are voting for us. But it also is us who are running for these offices and who have stepped up out of that pool to do so. It took me several years of consideration to make the decision to run for public office. You know, I had to learn about what is the responsibilities, the issues, the commitment and the time commitment that it takes to do this and be willing to do that. I continue to want to serve my community and in any way that I can. And council has been something that I've loved doing. But secondarily, the reason I chose to run is I was feeling unrepresented at all levels of government, not just local. I didn't see anybody like me in office, someone who pays rent to keep a roof over their head, who works full-time to pay the bills, who interacts with the public as part of their career every single day. And I thought, if not me, who? You know? I strive to be the elected official I'd want to vote for. And having served on term on council now, I want to continue the projects and advocacy and outreach that I've started. I want to continue to fairly represent my family, friends, neighbors, and coworkers to the best of my ability. I want to continue to bring a well-informed, logical, and rational voice to local government. Democracy is sometimes messy, as we all know. But our voice is how we participate, and participatory politics requires participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack?
Oh, going this way.
We are going backwards.
Oh, good. There you go. Welcome to my world. You know, it's, and I bring a little humor to the council, which is not a bad thing, I believe, on occasion. For those of you out there that know me, know that Jamie and I got married in Jerome. We've been coming here for many, many years. We love this town. I'm so honored. I say it all the time, I'm privileged to live here and the opportunity to be on the council and to work with this group of individuals, at this point, all the ladies on the council, and have the impact that we're having. It really makes me feel good. I've been in public service over 50 years in a variety of ways. This is the only elected position I've had outside organizations. And to me, it's been a tremendously rewarding opportunity to give back and help sustain, grow, innovate a community that I've loved for 40 years. And it's great. I think there's more we can do, there's more I want to do in improving the health of the people of Jerome, improving the infrastructure in Jerome, the affordable housing, a variety of issues. And it's a team sport. I've learned that in life. Life is a team sport. We're in this together, as they say. And I think this has been a wonderful opportunity for me. I really want to continue it. It takes more time than we thought, than I thought initially, but that's okay because we're getting a great payback. And that payback are the results that I see with my colleagues, whether it be the kiosk, whether it be the plans, whether working with the town crews and everyone. We're very fortunate in Jerome to have the people doing the things that they're doing for the town, whether it be the town crew, the fire department, the police department, others. So thank you for the opportunity to be here now. Ask for your vote again, for your vote of confidence, to allow me the opportunity to continue. And I'm very grateful for that and look forward to continuing to serve. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. John?
I've loved this town for the last 26 years since I first came through here. The people here are just outstanding, tolerant, non-biased to the most part, just great folks. I do believe the town is facing some concerns as far as growth, working with other political And we seem to be taking money from wherever we can get it. But I think that we also need to control how we spend it. And so that's my concerns. I think the council has done a great job as far as the improvements that they've made. The town crew seems to be running much more efficiently than it did 10 years ago. Police department seems to be more professional. The fire department, again, more professional. I don't want to necessarily change town. I want to continue to see it progress and grow slightly and continue to be a vibrant community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to start out by thanking my fellow Jeromeans, thanking the standing council. I also thank you, standing council, for the dedication and leadership in providing us leadership in these uncertain times. Jerome is about respecting, preserving the past, and looking towards the future. I also want to point out that in our landmark historic town, most of the townsfolk and Jeromeans that step up historically to be on the council are not politicians by profession. We're just people that want to serve our town because we love it. So again, thank you. I ask for your support on my reelection. And I want to throw a huge shout out to the roots of this town. You know who you are. Thank you. Vote. Thank you.
All right. Sage?
I will speak from my heart on the current issues for my closing statement today. This country and this town has been put through hell and back in the last four months, and excuse me if I cry. Just as things seemed to be settling down from COVID pandemic shock, we were hit with protests and riots and looting and killing. And I see so much hate and division, even in this tiny little town. It's breaking my heart to the core. Even those who loudly profess that they are helping are hurting if it is not done with hate, if it is done with hate, anger, shaming, blaming, degrading, and division. I implore all people to find the love and compassion in themselves and use that to push forward instead. A healthy relationship is two people working together as one to get through life. When one is weak, the other gives more to hold that up and together. Jerome has always been that way, like a family, but we are all in shock and spinning from recent events. We are all that weak person that could use that little extra help to bring us back to normalcy. Remember who you are, Jerome. Find your love and compassion and understanding and help pick your neighbors back up. Remember how to communicate with each other. I am not afraid to say that I am scared and I am hurt. I know from past life experiences that the only way to push through is with love and understanding for each other. I know this town is capable of that. It is a huge part of why Jerome is so unique. I volunteered almost two years ago to help take care of this wonderful little town because it is where my heart is. I had no idea that it would involve working closely with the mayor for the last four months in the middle of a pandemic and racial unrest. Mayor Barber and myself have done everything in our power to keep Jerome safe and to ensure that we get through this. It has been a lot of stress, and I will not lie. There were times I thought about reacting and stepping down. But every time I thought it through, it came to the same conclusion, I came to the same conclusion. I cannot step down. I was asked by the townspeople to do so, I have, excuse me, to do what I have been doing for the last two years, and we have accomplished a lot in that short time. So I ask again that you allow me the chance to continue being a caretaker of the town I deeply love. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane?
I can't say enough how much this council has impressed me and how happy it makes me, for as long as I've been here, to see young people and new people and people that share the caring about this town to step up and volunteer for the council. And everybody, I'm so impressed with what everyone has done here. Mayor Barber has done an excellent job, Vice Mayor Harvey, Mandy for stepping out and going down to Phoenix to advocate for this town. Jack for your sense of humor on the council. And I'm just so impressed with how well this council's worked together. It just warms my heart. And I want to see that continue. I'd like to see some of the projects that we've started continue and take part in that. The clinic in the town hall that was originally planned for there that Jack would like to see take place, I'd love to see that take place. The infrastructure projects. But I feel really good knowing that people look at the books and question things and discuss things and listen to people. And I want to welcome people to come to meetings, to send us emails, to continue communicating and make people feel welcome to participate in this town because that's what's made this town so wonderful. And be respectful and kind. And I know we all love each other, even if we don't always agree with each other. We always take care of each other. And I'd love to see that continue. We have a really special, unique town, and I'm honored that I have served with these people. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan?
I want to say thank you for inviting me to this forum. I'm new to all of this, and it is an honor to be in this room with all of you. You are all rock stars. I'm impressed with the work that you've done. I love this town, and I don't take commitments lightly. I'm ready to do this for two years or four years, however long anyone wants me to be here. I'm an approachable person. I like to be out and about and talk to people. I'm pretty friendly. I want to be in the community and see what their needs are, what their questions are, and bring it back to council and see what we can do as a family, because that's what we are up here. It's a tight-knit family. We all look out for each other. And that's what I'm proposing, I bring to the council. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. All right, I would like to thank all of you for your participation today. Remember, for the sake of our audience, that Election Day, the primary, takes place on August 4th, and the last day to register to vote or change your party registration or update your address is July 6th. And so if you are not registered to vote or need to update your voter registration, please go to www.servicerazona, written out, servicerazona.com. And be sure to sign up for permanent early voting so that you can get your ballot in the mail. Makes life a lot easier. About 80% of Arizonans already vote by mail. And so signing up for the early ballot, it's called PAVL, Permanent Early Voting List, will get that to you and make your life a lot easier and guarantee that you'll be able to get your vote in on time. So I'd like to thank all of you. I hope that the issues that came up in the questions were meaningful to you and reflected what is going on in Jerome and what needs to continue to go on. So thank you all for your participation. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.